We will now pay our due respect to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leading us in that pledge was the Masonic Lodge Boy Scouts Troop Number Twenty-Five, and now I present to you the Bayonne High School Beesknees.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the brave And the home of the brave, of the brave!
Three, two, one, march! 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 March!
One group that I didn't mention, and they are special to my heart, how about the Bayonne High School students? Give a wave, guys. We've got some wonderful students here. I know you're very disappointed missing Period Four, but you'll just have to get through it. At this point, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Deggman. He will share the mission of our program.
Thank you Superintendent Nice, thank you Principal Baccarella. Welcome to our distinguished guests and honorees. Today, we honor five heroes, three who gave the ultimate sacrifice, a member of the greatest generation, and a key contributor to our education veterans program at the VFW Joyce Herbert Museum. These heroes before us understood that service does not end once we return home. In fact, for our honorees, it appears to have just begun. They have improved our lives and our surroundings through their continued devotion to country and community. Their singular and collective actions have inspired thousands to work, volunteer, and understand the meaning of honor. Bayonne has the distinction of producing three Medal of Honor recipients. Further, the city and the school district have spawned countless civic heroes. There have been many men and women who have dedicated their lives to the progress of our community and the preservation of our way of life. The best example of that collective service is the success of our Veterans Museum. The money raised from our efforts here will be donated to this organization's Veterans Post Two-Two-Six. They welcome over 200 of our students and staff every year, going out of their way to provide veteran speakers and lectures, offering an unparalleled educational service to our students. They have established a learning community that is valuable not only to our students but to our citizens as well. This museum, through their efforts to educate, have created a fitting memorial to all those who gave the last measure of devotion. Their memories are forever enshrined on the walls so they may continue to inspire generations to come. Commander Flora and the posts were also instrumental in developing a wall of heroes at City Hall. It is our mission to assist the museum in their efforts by raising awareness and funds for their facility. The community has embraced our yearly dedication as flags seen on the way in today with donations into thousands. The paving the way for our Heroes Program designed to line the area surrounding the
Up here, I have proclamations for all the honorees, which will be presented, and a picture will be taken later from the mayor's office. But now, without further ado, the leader of the city of Bayonne, our mayor, Jim Davis.
Good morning, everyone. To all our veterans, thank you. Last year, I stood here and we talked about those two words, "thank you," and how much it means to just pass a veteran on the street and say "thank you." Today, I want to talk about a symbol that represents every single one of us, and that's our flag. It's our flag. It represents everyone in this room. That's why we stand for it. It's our flag. The first time that flag was brought into a battle, a soldier carried it, and a soldier has been carrying it ever since. That's why we stand for it. Because without those soldiers, without our veterans, none of us have the freedom that we wake up to each and every single day. That's why we stand for it. Not only does it represent our freedom, but in foreign lands, that flag is flown. It represents all of us in foreign lands, and it strikes fear in the hearts of those who want to oppress others. Because that flag is ours, and that's why we stand for it. It's not a symbol to be used for protesting. It's a symbol that stands for all of us. We are not perfect. None of us are perfect. Our country is not perfect, but we are the freest country in the world. No other country has what we have, and most countries and most people are jealous of what we have. And sometimes, we get carried away and we don't realize what we have, because we wake up each and every day and go about our lives, and that's freedom. We're free to do what we want, to become who we want to become, to make the choices we want to make. That's what that flag stands for. And moreover, every time I see the flag, all I think about is all of our veterans. And to our honorees today, I want to say thank you, congratulations, job well done. And to all our veterans, on behalf of the city, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I introduce Dr. Deggman, who will be introducing our guest speaker. Dr. Deggman.
Michael Emrick is a lifelong resident of Bayonne who attended John M. Bailey School, Bayonne High School, and Rutgers University. Michael was a member of the football team and worked in a school store during his time at BHS. After graduating from Bayonne High School in 2000, Michael joined the United States Navy. Shortly after 9/11, Michael was deployed in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. Later, Michael was deployed to the Middle East in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. Michael currently serves as civilian deputy chief of Public Affairs for the United States Army. Michael also serves as policy advisor to the U.S. Secretary of Veterans Affairs on his advisory committee for the readjustment of veterans. In 2020, Michael served as a strategic communications liaison for FEMA and U.S. military during the COVID-19 pandemic response in New York City. In 2017, Michael was elected to serve as a state commander for the Catholic War Veterans of New Jersey. Prior to that, Michael has served on the governor's transition team for Military and Veterans Affairs. Michael has a joint bachelor's degree of arts from Rutgers and NJIT, and a master's degree in political science from Rutgers, Newark. Michael still resides with his family in Bayonne, wife Caitlin Marra, and son, Michael Brendan. Please welcome Bayonne alum, Michael Emrick, to the podium.
Find my speech, it's hidden in here somewhere. The benefits of showing up early. So, good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me back to Bayonne High School. I do get to make it here a few times a year, so certainly happy to be here. Wanted to give a special shout-out to Dr. Deggman, Dan Ward, and Councilman Neil Carroll on all the work they do to put this together. This doesn't just happen when we all show up here, the lines coming down. They work meticulously from the second that they come into school in the morning, on top of their other duties as teachers and administrators, and they make this happen. So, let's give them a round of applause. I'd also like to thank our state legislators who are here from Trenton. They do amazing work on behalf of veterans, our city council, our mayor, the veterans groups, the different posts in here, they work every day for veterans, our police firemen, those who protect us every day, our administrators, Dr. Nice, and Assistant Superintendent Kenny Lopez. So, thank you. So, last year's speaker mentioned the military way of speaking, and I'll try to adhere to that today. It's the three Bs: be brilliant, be brief, and be gone. So, I will try to stick to that. As I said, I was a student here not too long ago, and my military journey started right in these halls with my great teachers and coaches, some of whom are here today, and my lifelong friends I made at Bayonne High School, you know, that we still get together once in a while for a beer. So, a lot of good memories here, and I always love coming back. In addition to the duties in my biography, I'm a screener for our U.S. senators, so I get to interview candidates for the U.S. Military Academy, particularly the Naval Academy, and I get to meet the brightest minds that our high schools are putting out to compete to be the next leaders of this nation, you know? Highly competitive process. Last year, I was speaking at a high school, talking to some high school kids, and I was just so impressed by their answers, their knowledge of geopolitics. One girl asked me a question, I was taken aback, I felt like I was in a college classroom, lecturing at Rutgers or something. But I wasn't. I was right here at Bayonne High School, and that is a testament to the teachers, administrators, the support staff, everybody in this room who wakes up every day and shapes the youth of our future. So, let's hear it for them. So, while riding my bike to Hudson County Park, I usually take my son, and we stop at the Field of Heroes Memorial, which is right outside these doors, which you all will get to see. And I look at the names, and I think of the deeds. And, you know, we share a special moment. The names of the names are on the monument, the deeds are what they did. When you walk by the main office here, and the other building, and the main building, you'll see a plaque of the World War II veterans who went to Bayonne High School and died. And just to look at all the names on there, it's simply something that really humbles you. They were 15, 16, and 17 years old, and some of them have never even left Bayonne, and they volunteered to go serve in a foreign war. They showed courage, they showed honor, they showed commitment to a cause that was bigger than themselves. And some of them we're honoring here today, believe it or not. From Patrick McNulty, who gave his life during the Korean War, to Michael Chuan, a hero aviator who flew missions over the skies of Vietnam, some of the most dangerous flying that ever happened in the modern world, and Stanley Kupchinsky, the First Battalion Marine, both of them left Bayonne to join the military, and they never came back to Bayonne. Alfred Ponderoff, a tin can sailor of World War II, personally my favorite. And he shows us today that he's not only part of the greatest generation, but the toughest by being 100 years young, marching down with us, and sitting with us today. So, let's hear it for Mr. McNulty. And my good friend Louis Rowan, who I've had the honor to serve on veterans groups with around town, another Korean War-era veteran, and a man who's dedicated his lives to veterans. Thank you, Louis. So, to the students here, showing honor, courage, and commitment is not only a military challenge, that was the challenge of their generation. There are different challenges for your generation, whether it's reporting bullying, harassment, or racism, or supporting your friend and classmate through a crisis. The time is yours, the challenge is laid between your feet, and it's your duty, not your option, your duty, to rise to those challenges and be the next leaders. So, go out, do great things for your country, then come back to Bayonne and make Bayonne a better place. If you do that, not only will you be remembered, but you'll be honored by the next generation doing the same things you did. And that is how we create a great community, and that is why we remember those in this field of heroes. I want to thank you, Superintendent Nice, Mayor Davis, everybody, have a wonderful day. Let's go outside and enjoy some sunshine.
Remember you well. Now, you're going to hear the reason why our band is number one in the state. They are about to do the military medley, and we invite anyone who hears their theme song to stand and be recognized. Obviously, this is probably one of the most meaningful pieces of music that I've ever heard, and I'm sure most people feel that way. So, in a moment, our band... Superintendent gave them a pizza party lunch yesterday. They were eating like they were going to the electric chair, right? Yeah, I know. The Bayonne High School Band. Wonderful, wonderful job. At this point, we get to our presentations, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce two gentlemen, Mr. Neil Carroll, teacher of social studies, and Mr. Dan Ward, the director of social studies, will take us through our awards presentation. Gentlemen?
Michael Daniel Chuan was born on October 26, 1938, in Bayonne. Michael served in the United States Air Force and attained the rank of captain. Captain Chuan joined the United States Air Force from New Jersey and was a member of the 47th Tactical Fighter Squadron. On September 30, 1965, he was the pilot of an F-4C Phantom II on a strike mission against enemy targets in Vietnam. As the fight regrouped to return to base after the mission, Captain Chuan's Phantom was shot down by anti-aircraft fire, and he was killed in action. Heavy enemy presence in the area prevented efforts to reach the crash site at that time. Michael was 26 years old at the time of his passing. Michael's daughter, Michelle, was born six months after his plane was shot down in Vietnam. Michael's remains, and the remains of other airmen in that battle, were repatriated to the United States on March 20, 1985. Michael Chuan is buried in Arlington Cemetery, and we would like a representative for Mr. Chuan to come up and join us now.
Glenn Flora is accepting the award on behalf of the Chuan family.
We'd also like to bring up the board, our keynote speaker, and members of the city council, and the mayor, to take the picture. We'd also like to bring up the board, our keynote speaker and members of the city council and the mayor, and to take the picture. Patrick Joseph McNulty was born on May 1st, 1932 in Bayonne. In July of 1949, he enlisted in the United States Army and held the rank of Private First Class. He was a member of the Headquarters Company, One Hundred and Eighty-seventh Airborne Infantry Regimental Combat Team. He served during the Korean War. On November 5th, 1951, he was seriously wounded by an enemy mortar burst near Sinmae, North Korea, and died from those wounds later that same day. At the time of his death, he was only nineteen years of age. He was awarded many commendations, including the Purple Heart, which he received for his work in Defense of Freedom and for his heroism and for the wounds received in North Korea on that day. We welcome up a representative from the McNulty family now.
Stanley J. Kupchinsky. Lance Corporal Stanley J. Kupchinsky was born on August 20th, 1946. He attended Samuel A. Roberson Elementary School and graduated from Bayonne Technical High School. Growing up on the Nineteenth Street area of Bayonne, Stanley loved sports and played everything imaginable. He even joined the PAL boxing team and went on to fight in the New Jersey Golden Gloves. In 1964, Stanley enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. While at boot camp on Paris Island, Stanley scored the highest for his platoon as a rifle expert. He was a member of the First Battalion, First Battalion First Marines and deployed to Vietnam. He attained the rank of Lance Corporal. On May 4th, May 14th, 1966, Stanley was killed in action by a ma- by a mine near Da Nang Province in Quang Nam Province, South Vietnam. He was just nineteen years old. Accepting the honor on behalf of Stanley J. Kupchinsky is Mr. Joe Kachansky. Childhood friend. Alfred Ponderdoff is a proud one-hundred-year-old World War II Navy veteran. He served from 1942 to 1945 aboard the USS Philip, a Navy destroyer built in Carney that saw action in the Pacific. He was a Seaman Second Class and a Radio Man Third Class. He took part in the Solomon Island Campaign, the Mariana and Palu Islands Campaign, the Philippines Campaign and the Borneo Campaign. He and his wife Edna moved to Bayonne in 1954. He still resides in the same house where they raised their three children, Alfred Ponderdoff. Louis C. Rowan. Louis C. Rowan, Rowan enlisted in the US Navy on April 1st, 1954. He was stationed on the USS, USS Diamond Head AE-19, an ammunition ship. He is a recipient of the National Defense Service Medal, the Navy Occupation Service Medal and the Hudson County Distinguished Service Medal. Upon returning home, he has been a dedicated and active member of the Bayonne community by helping veterans, the elderly and our youth. He volunteers to speak at the historic Joyce Herbert VFW Post 226 Veterans Museum about his Navy experiences. In this capacity, he's been able to educate many young Bayonne students in the rich military history of the, our city. Mr. Rowan is the chaplain for the Disabled American Veterans Captain PJ E. Hogan, Chapter Five, and is Sergeant in Arms for the Joyce Herbert VFW Post 226. He proudly marches in our Veterans Day and Memorial Day parades and attends special veteran events throughout Hudson County. Mr. Rowan is married to Barbara Hopkins, he has ten children and many grandchildren. Louis C. Rowan.
Once again, congratulations to all our honorees. Our closing number, once again, will be the Bayonne High School Beesnese, and they have a nice little special treat that will end our program. When that is completed, once again, our color guard will enter. They'll present colors, they will exit, we will follow them, and we will move outside to the flag where we will be doing our little, uh, presentation out there, and then our program will end. Anyone interested, right behind this stage in our west gym, a wonderful lunch is prepared, so after the thing on Avenue A, you're welcome to come back and have lunch. I'll remind you when you're outside. Beesnese.
God bless America. Land that I love, I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountain to the valley, to the ocean. What we found, oh, God bless America. My home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you very much.